The school district to order, but the records show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The first item on our agenda for this evening is an invocation and trustee Beavers has agreed to lead us in our invocation tonight.
Please join me in prayer. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. Thank you for this time that we could come together. Father, in just this time of year with Thanksgiving coming up, we thank you for all that you have blessed us with here in Prosper ISD. Father, we ask for protection for our students and teachers and members of the community as they travel and spend time with family during this holiday season and that you would bring them back to us safely again after the holiday. Lord, thank you so much for everything that you have done. And and with our students, Father, just this time of year as the as the semester comes closer to an end and we celebrate our students, just all the amazing things that they're doing, Lord, thank you for allowing that to happen. This evening, we ask for wisdom and discernment as we look to take action on the items before the board. And Father, thank you so much for loving us and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Would you stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item four is some important dates coming up and I'm going to ask that the secretary of the board, trustee Cavender, would just highlight the dates, please.
On November sixteenth, we'll have our beam signing for Walnut Grove. It will be held at the high school stadium. Is that correct?
Yes, at Children's Health.
Children's Health. We'll be out of school November twenty first to the twenty fifth for the Thanksgiving break. December twelfth will be our next regular school board meeting at seven P M. And then December nineteenth through January third, we'll be out for winter break, school holidays. And then for the election for next year, January eighteenth will be the first date of file for a place on the general election ballot. And February seventeenth will be the last date of file for the general election ballot.
Thank you, trustee Cavender. We're at agenda item five. We're going to do some celebrations.
We are. So we have three outstanding high school teachers, actually, that just were awarded. Unfortunately, they're not here with us tonight. Many of them are with students, shockingly, right? Because they have events with them in the evening. So Michael Logan, who is at Prosper High School, is the teacher of the year for the All American High School Film Festival. So we certainly want to honor him. He does an outstanding job at Prosper High School. And if you've ever been to the stadium, he's helping to support our students with all of the ribbon and all of the media that's going on at those events. So we're very fortunate that we have such a talented teacher to really help our our kids learn the right way to do things. And then we have Taylor Mersman. She is the Texas Association of Journalism Educators and she received the Pathfinder Award. And then we have Margie Raper, who was actually the secondary teacher of the year a couple of years ago for Rock Hill High School when it opened. And she's been named the Trailblazer Award for the Texas Association of Journalism Educators. So we certainly want to recognize them and maybe they're watching. If not, maybe they'll watch tomorrow or sometime and they'll get to see that we loved on them. So let's give them a round of applause.
Exciting times. Agenda item five B, we have some celebrations of service to Prosper ISD. We have two of those.
Actually going to come down here and do these.
Oh, do we have to come? Or are you just going to?
Um, so we'll start with, we'll start with Dr. Brad. Celebrating ten years of service in Prosper ISD, thank you for what you do. And I I'm not even going to try to list it because you do so much. So simply, thank you for what you do. You mean a lot to this district and we really appreciate all that you do. Thanks. I'm not going to try to put it on you. We have one more to celebrate tonight. Four score and seven years. Recognizing, celebrating fifteen years of service is our very own superintendent of schools, Dr. Holly Ferguson. We appreciate all that you do. Similar to what I said about Dr. Bradley, I'm not even going to try to list it. We know some of the things that you do, but I've said this to you privately, I want to say publicly, there are things that you do that many of us don't see. From late nights to early mornings, we appreciate you. Thank you for the sacrifices. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
My honor is every day.
I'm putting this on. It's fifteen years.
Agenda item six, we are going to hold a public hearing on the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two first rating. First is short for Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. And so we're going to hear from Dr. Penn. He's going to make a presentation as it relates to the first report. Trustees, this information is in your packet and so you've had an opportunity to review it. And tonight, we're going to publicly hear from Dr. Penn. Dr. Penn, it's all you.
Thank you. You took my opening slide. I was going to walk through what it was and now I'm, no. So this is the Financial Integrity Rating System. It's the Financial Accountability System for Finances. We kind of look at a few finances through the year. So when we have our quarterly financials, we'll talk through those. Those are always the most current. In either December or January, we'll have last year's audit, but the audit drives this. And so the data that we look at tonight is actually fairly old. It's from the twenty twenty one school year. So September of twenty through August of twenty one. So just keep that in mind as I'll point out some things of what was going on in the twenty twenty one year. The main goal is it's the accountability for the finances, just like you would have accountability on academics. That's the the driving force behind this program. And so we must prepare an annual report and then present that, which is what we are doing tonight. There is also an attached document that is the first report. It's publicly available from T E A for all districts. So it's out there that that shows the scoring. Tonight, we'll do the highlights of it. It's about twenty, it's twenty indicators. And so I'll I'll talk through those. But if you go through the web version, you can actually click on links to give additional breakdown on what generates that score. So the short version is that we received an A, a superior, which is the highest rating you can get. So I'll always pleased with that. Really, really pleased with that outcome. But we're going to walk through all those indicators. There's of the indicators, we scored a ninety six and then there's one thing that's called a ceiling that we lost one point on, which is a ninety five. And I'll talk through all of those as we go through. But the main thing is we got that A, which is what we're always going for. This is the scoring system. It's just like you would see on a grading scale, A's, B's and C's, and then anything less than a seventy is considered an F. And then these are the ceilings that we'll talk about. Basically, with the, they're not necessarily tied to a certain point amount. But if you miss that indicator, then that is the cap score you can receive. And and so we'll talk through all of those too, but those are called ceiling indicators. So working through the first five. So basically, did we turn in the audit on time? So there's a reporting feature. So we'll always, with our fiscal year, by the end of January, we'll always have the audit from the prior year before. We turned it in. So did we meet that deadline? Yes. An unmodified opinion, there's no substantial findings on the audit. Are we paying all of our debts? And then did we make our payments to all of the state government entities? Number four, you'll see that, yes, we considered passing that, but it also said that the ceiling was failed. This is from two and a half years ago. And so what that is looking at, from what we can find, we can't get confirmation from the comptroller, is a reporting related to sales tax. We turn in a sales tax form every month. There was no money owed, but in June of twenty twenty, when everything was shut down, we're, our best guess is that we, they didn't have a form, but we can't verify that with the comptroller and that we lost one point on that. So not a making payment, but more of a reporting, reporting issue. Number six, looking at fund balance in relation to operational expenditures. So when we talk about fund balance and we talk about how it's going to increase each year as the size of our budget grows, this is one of those indicators that drives that. So seventy five days operational. You can also think about three months at least, if you're talking about a quarter of our year. So we we've kept that fund balance where it needs to be, number of cash on hand to to pay the expenditures that we need. And then if you look at number nine, are we bringing in more than we're spending or do we still have that cash on hand? So we're passing all those indicators, getting full credit for those. Number ten, did we have less than a ten percent variance, so between ninety to one hundred and ten, of comparing our budgeted revenue to what the actual was for three years in a row? This one's really interesting to me. So we did get full credit for this. Last year, this is one that we lost points on. So we're a little over one hundred and ten. Generally, you would think if you brought in more revenue than you budgeted that that would be a good thing, but we did lose points on that last year. We filed an appeal that was denied. Interesting that they're not scoring that this year. It was a new indicator last year. I'm foreseeing this is probably a problem across the state and that's why my guess is that they're not scoring. So we got points on it, but they had a special note to not score it.
I note something there. I'd like to note the support and help from the Fast Growth Coalition because they were very involved with that, trying to support our fast growth school districts. That that was not a shining star for them. So appreciate all their work that they do.
Absolutely. Looking at number twelve, that was also a new indicator last year. This is one that we will continue to struggle with. So this is an example of trying to take an accountability system and fit every school in the state of Texas into one box. This is tied to the amount of debt we have with relation to property value. As long as our property value is growing like it is and we're continuing to have to sell to build, we're going to continue to struggle on this indicator and it's, we're just not going to fit there while we're building. At some point, years down the road, that one will probably better, but that's that's going to be one. There's nothing we can do with that unless we decide to stop building, which is not really an option for us. Number thirteen, I like to highlight this one. So we got ten points for this. It's looking at the school district's administrative costs equal to less than, it has a threshold ratio. So what it's looking at when we adopt the budget at the function level, twenty one and forty one functions, which are considered administrative type costs and comparing all of that to functions eleven, twelve, thirteen and thirty one, which are instruction and library curriculum PD and counseling. Basically, things that kind of really directly impact kids in the classroom. And so there's a ratio that they they apply there. And we are on the the high end of that, meaning that we are based on their measurement, doing very well on the cost we put towards administration, towards the cost we put towards things that directly impact classrooms. If that makes sense. School district not have a fifteen percent decline in the students to staff ratio. So as we talk about a lot, most of our cost is tied to personnel. And so really watching that ratio, our ratio has been very solid. Been really, for at least the past four years, it has stayed exactly the same. So we're really monitoring that really well. I'm keeping a close watch that we don't overstaff in relation to the amount of students we bring on. It's very easy when you bring in as many students as we are every year, but we do keep a close, close watch on that. Number fifteen, so the district's ADA within the allotted range of the district's biennial pupil projection submitted to T E A. So every December prior to the legislative session, I will submit a projection of what the ADA will look like for the next two years to help the legislative session, the legislators in their building of the budget. And so what that is looking at is, are you within the range of what you projected to your actual? And they didn't, again, this is another one that was not scored. This is very likely because it was in the season of adjusting ADA because of COVID and attendance. And so I'm sure that's why that was not scored. So we did receive the full credit for that. And then looking at the P E M's data compared to the audit, a variance of less than three percent past that. No material weaknesses in the audit and free of any noncompliance in audit. So all of those getting maximum points. And then posting everything that we need to for financial requirements. And then there's an item there talking about the property values at a board meeting before adopted budget. So again, back in this twenty twenty one year, Elsible Three had passed and they had changed the way they did property values. You see, you worked on, it's called the prior year values and it moved to current year values, which helped the state in terms of the funding. And a lot of school districts were benefited by the way that worked. And so there was a discussion that was required. We had at that time with the board to just notify you of that change in the financial systems. And so you did that and so you got credit there. In addition to these twenty indicators, there are a few items called disclosures that are required. So that is the board members of the time and superintendent at the time of the year. And so this is any kind of travel, mostly registration, conferences, participation in civic and state organizations. Any kind of travel would be reported. And then if there's, the reimbursements were listed, if there's any professional consulting that the superintendent does or any gifts of the superintendent or board, or if there's any kind of business transaction between school board members and the district, all those are required to be disclosed. We don't have any record of any of those. There's none of those occurred in these timeframes. We don't have any of those. So those are the disclosures that go with that. Again, that report is attached, but this is kind of a highlight of that and it is also publicly available for 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 review and additional diving into those forms if anybody's interested. So with that, that is, that concludes the presentation of the first first report. We will do the audit either December or January, once that's completed by our auditor. And that will be, in my humble opinion, a lot more accurate and timely information. And so we'll do that in the next month or two, depending on when that's completed. He's about wrapped up. So questions?
Thank you for that, Dr. Penn. Board members, for agenda item six B, we are able to have discussion now before we open for public comment on the first report. So let's let's start with any board comments. Anyone have any comments, questions for this discussion?
As always, appreciate the throw in us.
Thank you.
Dr. Ferguson, is there anything at all you want to say?
No, I just wanted to once again applaud the efforts, not only of Dr. Penn, but our whole entire business office. It's been so nice to see them all working together, really, for the betterment of our students and our staff and Prosper ISD. And once again, we are extremely lucky that Dr. Penn's leading that group.
Thank you, Dr. Penn. So at this time, we're going to move to agenda item six C, which is public comment for this first report. And so if there's anyone that desires to have public comment for for this, then we'll allow you to do that at this time. Going once, going twice. Okay, seeing no one moving, I'm going to, if there are no objections, we're going to close the public hearing on our first report. Agenda item seven is public comment on agenda items. And tonight, we do have a total of three individuals who have signed up to speak. And so we're going to allow these three individuals to each have two minutes to address the board tonight. Before that happens, I do need to just read this script. Let me do that now. All public comments at a regularly scheduled meeting should be limited to school, district, governance and operations. If you have a specific concern related to an employee or employee of the district or a specific student, you are encouraged to utilize the district's grievance procedures provided in board policies, F N G, D G B A or G F Local. Please note that the board will not respond to comments or questions raised during public comment. Pursuant to Prosper ISD Board Policy B E D Local, audience participation at a board meeting is limited to the portion of the meeting designated to receive public comment. In accordance with that policy, when necessary for effective meeting management or to accommodate large numbers of individuals wishing to address the board, the presiding officer may make adjustments to public comment procedures, including the establishment of an overall time limit for public comment and adjusting the time allotted for each speaker. However, no individual should be given less than one minute to make comments. Again, tonight, each of the three speakers. Thank you. I appreciate that. Each of the three speakers will receive three minutes. I initially said two. Bonus round tonight. So each of our three speakers will receive three minutes. At this time, we will hear comments related to items on the agenda. Comments about a topic not on the agenda will be heard toward the end of the meeting. Please note that if you begin to speak about an item that is not on the agenda during the public comment time for agenda items, I will ask you to stop speaking and wait until a non-agenda item come comment period later. The board will show each speaker courtesy and respect while he or she is speaking, and we simply ask that each speaker show the same to the board. Should any speaker disregard this request and become a disruption, I'll be forced to prematurely end that speaker's time at the podium. Additionally, in light of issues we've experienced over the past several board meetings, I must reiterate the call for respect. While the board understands the presence of thoughts, feelings and emotions, the recent demonstrations of self-control and decorum has deteriorated. Thankfully, we've not had to escort anyone out of our meetings. I must make you aware that the board no longer allows for audible responses to a speaker's comments. Out of respect to both the speaker and the audience, I kindly ask that you completely refrain from clapping, cheering, yelling, booing or otherwise audibly responding during this time. Foully adhered to this request will be considered a disruption to the meeting. Should any audience member or group of audience members become a disruption, I will be forced to remove that person or group from tonight's meeting. Finally, it is important to the board that we hear from parents and other individuals within our own community. To that end, when each speaker gets to the podium, we ask that you please tell us your name and whether you live within Prosper ISD boundaries. And let me just, I guess, kind of save you that. It looks like each one of our three speakers does live within Prosper ISD boundaries. So we're good there and I'll say your name. Our first speaker tonight is Matt Sexton, followed by Ashley Fox and then Justin. I'm going to, I'm going to try to say your last name. Is it Caipus? Capus? Justin Capus. All right. So Matt, Ashley and then Justin. And it looks like each one of you desires tonight to address agenda item eight D, school zoning. All right, Mr. Sexton, you have three minutes to address the board.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity. We have recently relocated into the Prosper area. We lived in Corpus in Houston and we had the opportunity to move to Dallas and we selected Prosper because of the school district. We actually interviewed at the high schools. We wanted to know which high school was best for our twelve year old, twelfth grade daughter. And and then it was selecting that high school and then it was choosing which middle school. And so it was rushing that we chose for our seventh grader, well, now a seventh grader and wanted the opportunity for those to find schools to stay through the rest of their academic career. So we had picked the neighborhood, we picked the house based on that school. And so I understand that there are many reviews and many factors that go into zoning. And so I'm asking for simply the opportunity for an option for my seventh grader, who will be an eighth grader next year, to stay at Rushing. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sexton. Ms. Fox. Good evening, Ms. Fox. You have three minutes to address the board.
Thank you for the opportunity. I really appreciate your time. I also have a seventh grader, incoming eighth grader at Rushing. And the other night, we had some discussions about school spirit and just the importance of having kids repeat and and build that tradition. And we've really tried that at Rushing, but I have another concern just to express. The other night, you said the reason that you're looking to rezone is to get alignment with the high schools. We don't really know where the alignment's going to be when they have high school number four. And so I would argue that nobody, since we don't know the future of the high school boundaries, I think there's a good chance Star Trail could get rezoned to high school number four, which geographically makes more sense. So if your theory were to be correct and our son were to go to Reynolds next year and they get, go to P H S in ninth grade and stay there, that's one thing. But if you're incorrect, my son would be at Reynolds or Rushing this year, Reynolds next year, P H S in ninth grade and high school number ten in his sophomore year. This means a group of kids would be uprooted four times, causing them to navigate new teachers, new coaches, new classrooms, new clubs, new friends, and the list goes on. These are the hardest and most formative years of a teen's life and in this day and age where mental health is an important topic, please don't put these kids who already went through COVID into a spot where they might attend four additional schools in four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for my own clarity, he, rising eighth grader, right? Thank you. And Justin, it's you.
Three minutes?
Three minutes.
Appreciate the time tonight. We had a really good meeting last Thursday with the board and Superintendent Ferguson, she, you're right, she's a rock star. I asked a question about data and she actually gave it to me at eight A M. The next day. I did not expect that. So I wanted to just confirm some things and share with the remaining people in the room that, again, it's a rising eighth grader in Rushing. In our conversation, we had talked about in the past, there's been rising fifth graders who have been given a stay-go option. Obviously, rising seniors get a stay-go option, but the rising eighth graders were just told, no, sorry, you're resilient. There's a big bucket. We're casting a wide net of resiliency, right? So what you're saying is fifth graders aren't resilient, seniors aren't resilient, but eighth graders are resilient. I think we just need some more consistency around that. The data that was provided, there's four hundred and eighty-two out of fifteen hundred rising eighth graders at Rushing. Ninety-four of those will be impacted. Star Trail Creeks a Legacy. Legacy Gardens was unknown. It's a small community still building out. So if you look at transportation, that's going to go from Star Trail to Reynolds. On data around historical surveys, say about fifty percent of those kids are going to take transportation because parents can't get them to school. So maybe fifty kids this is going to affect. And I guarantee you that all the parents of those fifty kids, if they go to Rushing, they'll get their kids to school, right? We'll figure out a way to do it. I personally have already told a neighbor that I'll get your daughter to the school if we need to. So I think that's what, three percent of the total population are rushing? And please to Dr. Bradley's comment at the meeting, don't yo-yo these kids. She just mentioned it as well. One school, two schools, three schools, maybe back to a fourth school. And that's, that's, that's tough. They're resilient, but they're resilient to a point, right? So that's, that's my comments. Three things I ask, just give them an option. Second piece is consider a more consistent strategy in the future. If you're going to do rising fifth grade, rising twelfth, let's keep eighth graders in there as well. It's going to be a problem. This is a growing district. It's a growing city. It's why people are moving here because people like you and the way you run it. Third, Star Trail has been rezoned almost three or four times. Let's just lock us in. It's just too much. It's a community that's on the border of all these different areas. And we got the fourth high school coming in. It's a nine iron away from Star Trail. But then we're looking at rezoning to the P H S zone, which makes complete sense. Just give the eighth graders an option.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you. That takes us through our comment period, public comment period for tonight. We are at agenda item eight. Agenda item eight A is update on bond twenty nineteen construction projects. And of course, we have several things going on within the district. So let's take a look.
Four projects, to be exact.
Nice. Walnut Grove. Liliana.
We have walls up. Soon a school. Hope everyone enjoys this song.
Just a curiosity question, the retaining wall there at Liliana, have we had to do another one of those anywhere or is that the only one?
We haven't, have we, Dr. Bradley?
Not of that size.
Okay.
We built them for water retention and so forth, but that's the largest one we've done.
Okay. Looks nice. Looks really nice. Dan Christie?
Located in Sutton Fields.
Do we have photos, or do we have a video for early childhood school? There we go. Like it. It's still hard to believe that with all of the construction that we have going on within the district, we're still playing, I'm gonna use the word catch-up, to the number of students that we have within our district.
It is shocking, I do see that Ms. Calhoun, our namesake, is sitting over there to the left, so we love that she comes.
Yes, she is.
I do send her the video, so she can see the update, but she wants to make sure it's actually happening, so I guess you need to, to verify that it's actually happening.
I like it.
I know you don't, that's why I did that. Gotta make you feel special while I can. I do wanna say thank you to Ben Pogue and to Josh Brown, and then the Pogue team. I know that their commitment to Prosper ISD is above and beyond the level of excellence that other school districts get, as I talked to other superintendents. So I wanna say thank you, thank you for committing to our kids, and also committing to our community to give them your absolute best, so thank you to both of you.
Thank you so much. Agenda Item 8B, nice segue into our update on enrollment. Do we have a, what's our magical number right now, where are we sitting as far as enrollment?
Twenty-five thousand thirty students, I actually got the opportunity last week to go meet the twenty-fifth thousand student, and she was an absolute delight. She was at Hayes Middle School, and is in seventh grade, and she was so much fun to talk to. She's moved really far from Frisco to Frisco.
There we go. There we go.
To a new ISD, so we'll probably be getting something out soon, but she was amazing.
I like it, so do you get like a pencil or something for being the twenty-fifth thousand student?
I mean, I went to go see her.
Okay, there you go, a visit from the superintendent. I like it. Agenda Item 8C, we are going to have an update on our athletics program, and we see the one and only Valerie Little.
Thank you guys, and thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about athletics tonight. I've got my two assistants with me, Coach Sane is our Assistant Athletic Director, and Coach Sharp is our Ticket and Event Manager. And they're really the ones that do all the work, I just end up getting the credit for it, so I appreciate them being here this evening. Our mission statement, okay, so my goal, because a lot of this, our mission statement, our goals, our data, y'all see that a lot. My goal is to finish the whole presentation in fifteen minutes. I promised Dr. Bradley I would not monopolize the whole place, but there's just a couple of things that I feel are important for you guys to know about. In our mission statement, there's a lot of words up there, the biggest ones you need to see is that we expect all of our programs to be an extension of the educational setting at all times. They are also, each person, each head coach is charged with making sure our kids know that it is about them being better people and better athletes, and that they respect all members of the community. So all of those other words are important, but the ones that are italicized, it's truly what all of our programs stand for. Our goals each year, we want all of our programs to have the culture of educational athletics, that means that it's not just about win at all cost. They're teaching daily character curriculum lessons, we provide all types of resources for our coaches, so that our kids are getting that along with the sport skills. We have an expectation of excellence in everything we do, we tell all of our new head coaches, look, I expect you to be an excellent spouse, an excellent parent, but also an excellent educator and an excellent coach. Academic success, that's very important to us. It's important that our kids are recognized, celebrated, we've got great kids who come from great parents, and we wanna make sure that that academics is definitely pushed and celebrated, like I said. Better people, better athletes, I've already mentioned that, and then to celebrate the history of Prosper ISD athletics, and we do that with our Hall of Honor. This year, we got our Hall of Honor plaques up on the planters at the community room, so all of those inductees can go by at any time and take a picture, they don't have to wait to get in the building, just a way for them to constantly be recognized, and then our Hall of Honor banquet will come up in January, that hopefully, all of you guys will get to attend. These are the main three focuses I'm gonna go over tonight, our academic success, our athletic success, and then just our ties to our community. And again, like I said, it was very hard to pick a couple of things to point out, these guys had to help me narrow things down, because I wanna stand here and shout all of the great things our coaches do. When it comes to academics, just a little data about the fact that we have almost 4,000 kids who are participating in athletics, nothing athletically is required, so those are 4,000 kids who choose to participate in an athletic program. One out of every three secondary students, and then you can see the opportunities that we have for kids. And what that means is, all those are opportunities for kids to be plugged into their school, responsible to their coaches, responsible to their program leaders, a little bit more accountability. This is just a quote from Billie Jean King that really touches on the fact about educational athletics, sports teaches you character, it teaches you to play by the rules, it teaches you to know what it feels like to win and lose, and it teaches you about life, that is our goal. A little bit more academic success, we had 54 student athletes earn scholarships last year. I truly feel like we'll beat that number, because last week we had 27, and then we've got a December football signing, and then our spring one, so I really think we'll beat that 54, and then 449 academic all-district, 93 academic all-state. Those are students who are able to maintain a 90 average and above during their entire season. So it's kids who are constantly taking their care of their academics, as well as being able to dominate on the field of play. I talk a lot about how athletics is the number-one at-risk program in the state of Texas. In the next couple of slides of data, it just shows you how our athletes compare to non-athletes. Our GPAs are higher, the discipline offenses are lower. Attendance is higher for athletes compared to non-athletes, or, I'm sorry, the attendance is higher, but that shows absences, so absences are lower, so we still win on that slide. And then the star performance level, that our kids are performing better than non-athletes. And truly, what all of this shows is that they have another person that they're accountable to, not that our parents are not enough, but sometimes your parents are not enough. And so it helps to have that program leader, that coach, that team, that you are committed to, and you are expected to, they also hold you accountable. So we have a new award that we're gonna give this year, this is our Prosper ISD Academic Cup, and it's the first year for it. Coach Sane has done a ton of work to make sure that we can get the data we need. Basically, what we want is a way for our teams to compete that's not athletically. The athletic programs are not always equal, and so with Academic Cup, though, it can be equal, so we will take each team GPA. He's figured out reports, how to do all that, and he'll just give me the data and we'll pick it, but he'll do all the work. And so we'll do team GPA, they get points for that, and then they get points for each person that makes academic all-district, and each person who makes academic all-state. So at the end of it, all of those points will be added together, and then the high school with the highest point value will be our Academic Cup winner. And we'll get a trophy that they can put a little plaque on, and we'll pass it around to all of the high schools eventually, but it's just a way for them to be competitive, and us to kind of level that playing field. When it comes to athletics, just a couple of successes that we've already had, now, we had to turn this in, well, we didn't have to, we turned it in a couple of weeks ago, so that I can mark it off my list, so there's a couple that are not updated on here. This was our first year with water polo, and what that means is that we had more opportunities for our kids this year. This was the first year the UL allowed it to be a sport, and there were several districts who did not even try. And it was disappointing, right, because it was extra work, and it was an extra burden on your coaches, our assistant swim coaches became our head water polo, but all four of our teams, Rock Hill Boys and Girls, Prosper High Boys and Girls, they all made playoffs. And that's just a testament to the kids we have, right, those kids wouldn't have had that opportunity if we weren't willing to be able to sponsor that sport, so thank you guys for that. Cross-country, Prosper High was district champs in boys and girls. We had a young man get fourth at state, Jack Johnston, and then Shawaya Johnson got seventh at state, so we were very excited for them to compete at that level. PHS tennis qualified for playoffs, PHS football qualified. They won by district last week, we've got area this Friday, just in case you hadn't heard. And then we just finished this past weekend with our girls volleyball team at Prosper High, was one of the number eight, top eight teams in the state, they were in the Elite Eight, and they lost in the regional semifinal. So that's the furthest they've been in a couple of years, and we were really proud of them. And then basketball, wrestling, swim and dive, golf, that's all started. Soccer starts the week after Thanksgiving break, and then baseball, softball, track and field, everything else starts after that, so we are rolling. Couple of the highlights from last year, we did have seven district championships last year, and those are listed right there. We also had two teams from Rock Hill, swim and dive, and softball, who made it to the state semifinal, which was unbelievable for that new school, for them to go that far. Just a little reminder, I think sometimes people don't realize how many events we do host, we host over 1,100 Prosper ISD events every year. And that is, Nick Sharp is our, when I say Ticket Event Manager, he organizes every single one of those. And then we have 22 playoff games, and while that doesn't seem like a lot, that is two neutral teams coming to your facility to play, so you're dealing with both coaches, both administrators, trying to really give them a great experience. One of the things Dr. Ferguson has charged us with is that when people come here, they are in all of our facilities, that's why they come. But when they leave, our job is to make sure they are in all of the people, in the way that they were treated, and the experience that they've had. And I think our team does a really good job of that. And then regional tournaments, the UL is our governing body for athletics, and they, they've learned that we can do it really well, so we're now up to four tournaments that we host, five if you count boys and girls basketball. Region two team tennis was in the fall, we just finished region two volleyball at Rock Hill this past week, where Dr. Hickey's niece made it to state on, on their team. So it's very exciting to see our neighbors and stuff be able to play in our facilities and be successful. And then we've got girls and boys basketball coming up, and then tennis in the spring. The reason they ask us to host these is because they know we will do a good job, and it helps, because we've got a great relationship with them, if we need help with eligibility or anything, they are willing to help us. A couple of improvements that we've made, I mentioned the Hall of Honor plaques, those are on the planters in front of the community room. In the community room, we also have gotten framed medals of all of our state championships, and a big wall of honor in there, just to recognize all of those kids. And then this is the second floor of the stadium, a lot of people haven't seen this, this is when you come down the elevator and you are heading out to the concourse. Mr. Miller and our maintenance crew painted the hallways black, which made a big difference, but then we put a stadium wrap, and then all of those pictures, what that truly represents is all of the different kids that are a part of Friday Night Football. I think there's one picture of football players up there, but the rest, it's just a reminder of all the different groups that go into Friday Night Productions. Which is perfect segue to this slide, there are over, close to, about 14,000 people on any given night at that stadium, when it is packed and sold out. But it's just a reminder that a lot of times, those football players are the smallest group on that field, it's more than just a stadium for our kids. Dr. Ferguson mentioned earlier our broadcast students with Michael Logan and Michael Hatch, they do an unbelievable job running that video screen. They've even gotten national recognition because of it, so we're thankful for all they do. In the naderatorium, I believe that total is, we're serving over 4,300 students through our naderatorium. We were actually challenged and told that that thing would be a money pit, and we literally said, no, it will not. Because we have programmed enough programs in there, that while it's costly to run an naderatorium, with these 4,300 students we have coming through there, we are able to cover those costs. And then that last number is the over 2,000 third-grade students in Prosper ISD, every single one of them go through a water safety program. Water safety, drowning, that's the number-two risk of student deaths, and so years ago, when we opened this, Dr. Ferguson said we need to do a third-grade water safety program, and they were able to come out with all the details, and it's really great, because it touches all of our students, and helps provide them safety. And then community, our ties with community, this is the one strategic plan, maybe the only one, that we think we knock out of the park. It's the impact, the sense of connection within all Prosper ISD students, family, and staff, and we definitely provide connection for them. This year, we had our first Pride of Prosper game, which was very exciting for our entire community, to have Prosper on both sides of the stadium was unbelievable. Every time we saw our coaches standing together talking, or the principals, it really was a neat impact on all of our kids. And then Dr. Ferguson was able to secure the amazing drone show, which was such a great surprise for everyone, that was neat for our community to get to experience. Professional leadership, this is just a reminder that our community is quite large when it comes to coaching. All five of these people on the screen are not just leaders in their field, but they are leaders in their professional community as well. Coach Schmidt presented in last February in the Leadership Summit, Coach Bud presented at Texas Girls Coaches Association, and then the final three, myself, Coach Sane, and Coach Baird, we all presented at Texas High School Coaches Association this summer. So, not just leaders here at home, but we are also leaders in our profession to try to influence others. The community that we build with our students and families, tons of summer camps, we have Student Athletes of the Month, our Hall of Honor is how we recognize our families. Flight Crew and Blue Crew, those are both football-related programs, where younger students are attached to our high school students, and they have, it's an outreach program for our younger students. Football's not the only ones doing that, this year, we've got dugout dudes, baseball's doing it, we've got softball sisters with softball, so all of our programs are trying to come up with outreach programs. Servant leadership, you will see our, our high school students a lot opening car doors at elementaries, and it's just a way for them to get out, be around our younger kids, and influence them and be role models. And then all of our sports host elementary and middle school nights as well, where those kids get to come in for free and be at our events. The community with our staff, National Coaches Day was in October, and we feed all 175 of them breakfast. If you wanna get to a coach's heart, feed them, right, we like to keep their bellies full. So we fed them breakfast that day, celebrated them a little bit, we do a Coach of the Month for high school and middle school. This past year, we started the Coaches Ball, which is that picture where they're all in their formals. We had an unbelievable night, it was almost like a banquet for coaches, they all got to get dressed up in their formals. We had the drill team as babysitters downstairs in the community room, so they could ditch, drop off their children downstairs, and then come up to the community room, we had a nice dinner for them. Dr. Ferguson spoke to them, gave them awards, it really was a great time for them to just relax and enjoy each other. I did not realize how popular the photo booths would be, because when you're that dressed up, everybody wanted a picture, so we'll, we'll have to maximize those next year. But it was a great night for them, we were able to get that sponsored and paid for, and so that was, it was a great way to recognize and celebrate them. We do faculty nights at our games, we've got a Prosper High School night and a Rock Hill night, where the entire staff goes into the community room, eats dinner, the principal feeds them, and then we make space for them out in the general admission, so they can watch the game together as a faculty. And then we feed our coaches' families, the coaches don't get to do it, they're out working, but we bring their family and their kids in the community room and feed them before a football game, just to really foster that sense of community. And then we have an aspiring Athletic Administrators Academy, whereas we are trying to train people who wanna be head coaches, athletic directors, coordinators, and make sure they are ready with our growth. So lots of opportunities for us to engage with our staff, with our kids, and with our community. And then, speaking of engaging with our community, I don't know if you guys know, but Walnut Grove is opening next year. Even this week, there was some confusion, you know, I had someone reach out and say, I heard the UL denied us on athletics, well, I told her, I said, look, that's crazy. I get why people are frustrated about it, because they don't feel like they have answers. We will have varsity athletics in every sport at Walnut Grove. The only uncertainty out there is what district football will be in. Every other district, we will find out in February, March, they accepted us in October, and they're not changing that. So, if anyone says any different, feel free to give them my cell phone, and I'll talk to them. I know that was quick, and we've got a ton of things that go on, but it was just a little glimpse of what we do. And we're very appreciative of the support that you guys provide, and so I will answer any questions any of you may have.
I just want you to know how excited you sound about the athletics program in Prosper ISD.
It's pretty fun, it's, I, I'll say this, I tell a lot of people on Sunday nights, when I'm sitting there doing our office agendas, like I really do just get juiced up about, let's get this week going, it's, I'm very honored to be in this position and be able to lead our coaches and kids.
Thank you for what you do.
You said juiced up.
Yes. And she also whispered to her slide as a win.
We take the wins where we can get them.
Trustees, any questions for?
I don't know a question, I just wanna say thank you so much, to watch you firsthand, to come into our district years ago, and to bring us from where we were with the small booster clubs and one high school, to now where we are. It is under your leadership, and, and each of you, so thank you so much, it's exciting to see your passion, it's spreading.
We appreciate each of you, so thank you for what you do. Agenda Item 8D, we are going to see... So let me mention this, trustees, we're gonna do two things tonight. Right now, we're going to have a presentation on the proposed 2023-24 middle school attendance boundaries. And then, once we get to later in the agenda, we're going to discuss whether or not we're going to approve this. So, at this point, on Agenda Item 8D, there is this informational report for the proposed 2023-24 middle school attendance boundaries.
I'd like to say thank you to the board members who came, I think that that means so much to our families, for you all to engage with them, to hear their concerns, and really validate where they are. Plus, there are things that we may miss if we weren't listening closely to our community, so through the feedback form, but also, I think, the face-to-face contact, the relationship that we get the chance to be able to make. And so, we learn some things every time that we engage, so I wanna say thank you to our trustees, but also to our parents who are so involved and committed to the excellence that we have in Prosper ISD. Because I know that took time out of your evening, and I know that it's very important to you, and we certainly wanna be able to hear from you. So, let's jump into some attendance boundaries, so obviously, our students... So let's jump into some attendance boundaries. So obviously, our student growth continues to exceed expectations. And it's because our teachers do such a phenomenal job at the campus level and word is out. So our growth is something that is a great asset to us. It provides a lot of opportunities, but also it can be very challenging because of facility needs that we have for students. Right now, at Rushing Elementary, our west side of the district is growing immensely. So if you haven't been out there, I would suggest you go out, but don't get on Parven Road. That would not be a good place to land. Still a dirt road, and there's many dirt roads that are still on that side of town, but the growth is definitely coming that way. And so we have some overcrowding that we need to look at leveling out for Rushing Middle School specifically. And then one of the things that the Board Zoning Committee, and I truly appreciate their efforts, because this was months ago that we sat down and started really looking at the zoning, not only for high school, but then also middle school. And they were very committed to how do we clean up the zone so that kids can maybe get into more of a true feeding feeder pattern, because we have experienced that, especially with high school, that some of the students kind of got caught in a little bit of a whirlwind of, I went to this elementary, but then I got over to this middle school, but now you're gonna send me to this high school. So again, the feedback loop that we were able to get from families was very beneficial because we were able to catch some of those issues and be able to make a wrong right with many of our families and our students. And then we, we actually have two demographers in Prosper ISD who helps us really look at the numbers and what is happening as far as the commercial and residential that is coming into Prosper and what is on the horizon. And so we, we really don't just make it up. We actually have support and data and analytics to look at, and we have those at least every quarter. But I would say between Dr. Penn, Dr. Bradley, myself and many others of us, we spend our time in this conversation about zoning and student enrollment pretty consistently and what's on the horizon for Prosper ISD. Really appreciate the Communications Department making sure that we had that online feedback form for our families, and we were able to get a lot of great feedback. I think that's a great way for parents to be able to tell us what their needs are, because there's a lot of demands on your time in the evening. And so we, we really do appreciate that, and all of the board gets access to those comments so that they can read through those and see. And then obviously, our in-person meeting at Reynolds Middle School last week, which was great, and being able to connect with some of our families that attended. And these are what we have on the horizon. So you saw Brenda Calhoun Early Childhood School, Liliana Elementary, Dan Christie, and then Walnut Grove. So those are actually the projects that we have moving right now. And then we have Daniel L. Jones Middle School. One thing that I want to bring up about Daniel Jones during the pandemic, getting values from Denton County and Collin County, there were a little, there were challenges behind that. And because of that, there was a delay on Daniel Jones because we didn't know if we were going to have those values or what did the world even look like in the middle of the pandemic. That will go to the south side of the district. It will sit adjacent basically to Rock Hill High School. And we will be able to open that in twenty-twenty-four. And then Elementary eighteen will go on the south side of the district to relieve specifically Spradley Elementary. And then, as you all know, the release that we have, the communications release for high school number four on the southeast corner of Till Parkway and Fish Trap. So let's get into the zoning. Right now, the board has done an excellent job of securing land, and as you all know, each and every day, the price of land in Prosper ISD and the five municipalities that we serve, it goes up every single day. And so the faster that we can grab land, the better off we are in being good stewards of those bond funds that you all approved in twenty-nineteen with an eighty-five percent voter approval. And so we have ten of our probably twelve sites that we need for middle schools specifically. So we will continue to be able or work towards purchasing a couple more sites in the future. And you can see where those middle school sites currently sit in our district. And then Jones Middle School, obviously right down here in the future, and then Hayes. And so you can see with the zoning that we were looking at trying to get a balance of the numbers that exist in each of the middle schools. And so that actually led us to a couple of the subdivisions, those that were mentioned tonight. Star Trail, Legacy Gardens and Creeks of Legacy kind of are sitting in that kind of limbo a little bit. Don't get offended by the word limbo. We're gonna get, we're gonna get settled up here in a minute. And it's been interesting over my fifteen years in the district, kind of watching that ebb and flow through this entire district. It's at one point in time, it was Willow Ridge, and so they would be a split, or Lysima. So it has moved, and now it's moved over to the west side of the district. So really trying to figure out how do we get in those feeder patterns, because that was a goal for the, the board subcommittee, but then also trying to make sure that we're allowing some capacity, because we do have a little bit of time before we'll get Jones Middle School. And again, that's gonna serve the south side of the district. It's not really going to serve relief on the west side of the district, Reynolds and Rushing specifically. So we've met with our families, and one of the things that I would like to recommend, the district would like to recommend is that Creeks of Legacy, Star Trail and Legacy Gardens, those rising seventh to eighth graders have the choice to be able to remain at Rushing so that they do not go through that yo-yo zoning that we continue to use as a term for our families. And to the point of many of our speakers tonight, we potentially could be looking at another move for them with high school four opening. And so this will eliminate that. I will ask, though, that you all come back to us as we're doing the zoning, as we get into the future and remind us of this moment, because when we start looking at numbers and we start looking at maps, you have that very specific story. And so if this then turns into a situation in high school, please circle back to us and let us know, because we don't want to put our kids through that dynamic. And we did have that happen with Walnut Grove, and we were able to catch a few of those situations where kids had kind of gotten caught in that middle school zoning. So certainly appreciate all of your feedback, but this is our recommendation from the district to take care of those specifically those three subdivisions. We're looking at about ninety-four, probably a little over a hundred. Now, any student that moves in past this time, that choice wouldn't be sitting there. So we'll go through the choice time, and that will lead us all the way until the twenty-eighth of November when we return from our Thanksgiving break, we'll close it down. And then obviously, any child that moves in after that, say a home is built, then they would go ahead and go to Reynolds.
Dr. Ferguson, I hate to interrupt your presentation.
But would you just kind of, the part where in parentheses it says without transportation, would you just kind of?
Yes. So ultimately, the students would be on what we would refer to as a transfer. And whenever our students are on a transfer, parents then are providing transportation to and from on that transfer, and then we're looking at attendance, grades, discipline, all of those things are in good standing, or the transfer could be revoked. So we'll treat that just like we do any other transfer for those students that are choosing that. Any questions?
And this will be in Skyward, parents will make the choice within Skyward, much like they would Walnut Grove.
Yes. And that will be parent login, so your kids can't decide what they're going to do. You'll actually have to talk to them and be in charge of that through your login. And it'll be timestamped, so we'll know. It have those numbers, and we do need those numbers. I know I shared with several of the family members that attended last week. It impacts staffing, it impacts course offerings. So we have a lot of decisions that are, they're really hinged on those student numbers and where they're going.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Good job.
Okay. Dr. Bradley gets the credit. He's the zoning guy.
Thank you both. Okay, we're at agenda item eight E. This is, again, just information. We've already approved the class size waivers, but in your packets, trustees, you have a copy of the classroom waivers and what that looks like at the present time. And so we don't, we don't want to, again, we've already approved it, but we don't want to lose sight of it. And so that's why it's in front of you, is just so you have an idea of how many classrooms per campus are on waiver.
I'd like to give a hats off to Mrs. Hunt. Our Chief Human Resource Officer is doing a fabulous job of getting out to these universities. She bought, has offered some open contracts, because we know that the job market for teachers is going to be a dogfight out there, in all honesty, between all the districts that are trying to get teachers. So she is already hitting the ground running and taking along several of our leaders with her to recruit the absolute best to come in to Prosper. So we're excited to have these newbies that come to us, and then anybody else. And I've been telling every staff I talk to when I go to their staff meeting, if you know a friend, I don't care if they're high school, elementary or middle, tell them to come to Prosper. So for all of you out there, recruit for us as well.
There's only one Prosper ISD. Agenda item nine A, consideration and possible action on a construction manager at-risk C M A R for multiple projects. And we have Dr. Bradley.
Forrest, sorry, I do need to revisit. Mr. Wilber, you asked a question earlier. We do have two other really large retaining walls in the district. They are called the outfield walls at Rock Hill and Walnut Grove's baseball field. So most of the time, we don't pay attention to those, but those are actually functioning retaining walls that create a baseball field. And so our civil engineer does a good job of hiding that in there. So those would be our largest retaining walls at this point. I talked to you tonight about the C M at Risk for middle school number six, high school four, the Performing Arts Center and Administration and Staff Development Center. We packaged all of these together. We've talked about some of the challenges currently going on in the market and being able to secure any, anything, really. I mean, everything from HVAC units to masonry to labor is challenging at this time. And we know that we need middle school six and high school four immediately, so we're gonna open those right in August of twenty-five. And so it's go time. We've already been planning, already had meetings with the town of Prosper. Well on our, Huckabee's been designing full bore on those things for a while. And so we're moving as fast as we can there. Those two, we know we need to jump very quickly. The Performing Arts Center and Administration and Staff Development Center are, are needs. I think anybody that works in this building or exists in this building can point to some needs that we're, we're running into here. But those projects are a part of this package partly because we know that we're not gonna build those, when we still have needs for students, and we can fund the staff for those students, but there may come an opportunity, depending on taxable values, that we could jump. Those, those two facilities are not tied to an August one opening, right? You could open an admin building in the middle of the year, you could open a performing arts center in the middle of the year. And so there's some flexibility there, and so we felt that it was wise to, to package these together. And so we solicited bids, and on October twentieth, we received those bids, and the committee has gone through and evaluated those bidders. And the, the bid tab that you received showed, showed our evaluation. And really, they were asked to bid on a couple of things, a pre-construction services fee and then a percentage. And I'm here tonight to recommend Pogue to you, their, their pre-construction fee was seventy-five thousand dollars for these projects, and then a point eight-nine percent fee, which is the lowest fee I've ever seen on this. So I want to be very clear about that. We, we have done a lot of jobs at one percent, and Pogue has, has done that for us. They bid at point eight-nine percent on this. I've, I've never seen one below one before. And so it continues to speak to their, their partnership. We did receive a couple of other bids. I just want to point out that Steele and Freeman wasn't completely rated on your sheet, and that's because they didn't bid on every project. They did not bid for high school four, and I think it likely has to do with just the size and scope of that project, right, and some difficulties that would cause. And so I'm here to recommend Pogue to you for this C M at Risk package tonight. In the back of the room, I've got Mr. Piakowski, Mr. Williams, Mr. Pogue, Mr. Bledsoe, Mr. Colquitt, and there's Mr. Brown, who helped us evaluate this from Huckabee. And so those guys are here tonight. If there's any questions at this time, I'll certainly entertain those, but that would be the recommendation would be for Pogue Construction for these projects.
Trustees, we are being asked to take action on this tonight. This is one of our proposed action items. And so we see the recommendation by administration. Are there any questions or comments for administration before we try to move this to a vote?
Excuse me. Package of five projects. Have we done a package of five before, Dr. Bradley?
Yes, so we actually did six in twenty-twenty that, or that went back with Walnut Grove, Jones Middle School, had two elementaries, Rucker renovations, and then the construction managers fund that we've used just kind of as an emergency if we had. And so at that time, we, we actually, that would have been six, but that's the, the other time we've done a large package like this.
And I know in the past, the district has done a large C M at Risk package like this. They've also put out a CSP project. Is that still, you know, something in the future that, kind of that strategy will be looked at?
Yes, definitely. I think it's important. We've used both CSP and C M at Risk, and the mark, the prevailing market, I think, is, is where we've tried to use that when we know we can secure materials and the timelines in our favor, we want to use. I think it's fair to say we as a district want to use CSP when possible. Because, right, we're bidding that, everyone's on the same page here. This market, I think, makes it difficult to do that right now, because the lead times for these projects and securing these materials is so long. And if we can get a construction manager at risk on board right now, as we're, as you well know, we're taking the Walnut Grove plan, replaying it at, for high school four with a few changes. But getting this now with a project of that size and really doing the same with middle school six, taking Jones Middle School going there, and then taking elementary eighteen, and really just redoing number seventeen. We're looking for all the advantages we hope that one construction manager could bring, and say, I need HVAC for all three of these projects now. Right? And, and so I, I think that's the advantage C M at Risk gives us in the moment. But I, I hope we're back to a place where we can do CSP on some projects very quickly.
Anyone else have any questions? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion.
I got, I move that the board approve the construction manager at risk for multiple projects as, as presented by administration.
Thank you, Trustee Beavers. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. All in favor? That is all seven of us. Agenda item eight B, consideration and possible action on twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four middle school attendance boundaries. All right, we've had much conversation. We've had incredible amount of feedback. We've had some public comment tonight. We've had a presentation tonight. I think we have enough information, but is there any discussion, any conversation before we attempt to move to a vote on agenda item eight B?
I'll just say what I'd said before, that I'm grateful that Dr. Ferguson and the district has given the families different avenues to express their opinions about the zoning. It, it means a lot to hear, you know, if something has been overlooked or missed with individual stories.
I have a clarifying question. So if we approve the recommendation, incoming aetherators will have a choice to stay at Rushing, correct, in those neighborhoods?
With those three neighborhoods.
Legacy and Creeks, okay.
Because those are the ones that kind of got caught, right?
Right.
On pushing this way or this way.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, any questions about it? Any clarification needed before we try to move towards a vote? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
I make a motion. I move that the board approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four middle school attendance border, boundaries and student configurations as presented by administration.
Thank you, Trustee Dixon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Cavender. All in favor? That's all seven of us. Okay, we're at agenda item ten. We're going to attempt to approve consent agenda. There are a couple of items in consent agenda that we need to look at pulling. Agenda item ten E, consideration and a possible, consideration and possible action regarding programs and resources required by Texas Education Code. Yes, it's that one. That's the one dealing with Shaq. Where, you'd like to pull that one, is that correct, Trustee Linker?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we're going to pull agenda item ten E from consent. Need to have some discussion on that. I also think it may, I think it necessary that we pull the minutes from October sixth special meeting. We probably need to pull that one from consent, because there were two board members that weren't present at that one. So let's approve that one separately, since there were two board members that weren't at that one. So let's just pull that one from consent as well, just to make that one clean. So what we'll do is look to approve agenda item ten A minus the special agenda item ten A minus the special meeting on October the sixth, ten B, ten C, and ten D. And then we will seek to approve the special call meeting minutes separate and then ten E separate. If that wasn't confusing enough, alright, I'll ask for a motion.
Okay, I'm gonna attempt this.
Alright.
I moved that the board, the board approved the consent agenda for ten A, October seventeenth and October thirty first. Ten B, ten C, and ten D.
Thank you for that. And I think you did that one exactly right. Trustee Dow, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Linker. All in favor? That's all seven of us. Okay, and then again, there are two board members who weren't in attendance at the one for October the sixth. So is there a motion to approve the October sixth meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the October sixth special meeting.
Thank you, Trustee Cavender. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Dow. All in favor? That's five of us. Okay, minus the two who weren't. Thank you. We appreciate that. And then now let's look at ten E, which is the consideration and possible action to approve programs and resources required by Texas Education Code Title Two, subtitle F, chapter twenty-eight, subchapter A, twenty-eight dot zero zero four. And with this one, Trustee Linker did ask that we pull this one from consent. Trustee Linker, I'm going to send this your way so we can talk about this to some extent.
Sure. What I, what I'm asking for is if we can potentially table this to, to vote on until the December meeting. I would like to have the chance to view some of the curriculum videos. And because some of them are copyrighted, we can't view them unless we go into the district office. Because we're dealing with subjects like child abuse, family violence, dating violence, sex trafficking, especially K through, well, it's K through twelve, but specifically on the youngers. I would feel more comfortable viewing the videos before voting on them. So that's my request, if we can table that to December.
I hear that. What I would ask is for Dr. Ferguson, if you could give all of us some background on I know it's in our packet. Let me start there. Trustees, it's in your packet for this Shack recommendation. Dr. Ferguson, do you mind just kind of walking us through what that process looks like that got us to tonight?
Sure. So for the community, because you may not know what Shack is, it's Student Health Advisory Committee. And that committee is comprised of school personnel, also of parents who have signed up to serve on this committee. Typically those on, that serve on the committee from the community, they have some type of typically health background. They may be a nurse, a doctor, nutritionist, psychologist, all of that kind of is what typically makes up the committee. They review these products, just like Play It Safe and then the Protect Yourself and then the Vector Solutions for all of our students. And then they weigh in. And inside of your packet, there were feedback pieces from those committee members and what it is that they saw, what they thought about those offerings for our students. One of the things that I think I need to make you aware of is that this is an opt-in option for our parents. So for example, as a parent, if I had a second grader, I would, if I did not contact and say, I want my child to watch it, and I just didn't say anything at all, my child wouldn't watch it. We would not pull them in. The only way they would watch it is if it's an opt-in. So if I said, I want my child to watch this, then they would be pulled in to watch this. Now, one thing to note on Play It Safe and Protect Yourself rules, those are at the hands of our counselors. They're actually doing that because that falls in those elementary grades. And so they actually work with the kids. The parents do have the option too to come in and preview any type of video or material prior to, and as Mr. Linker did share, the Play It Safe curriculum and the Protect Your Rules or Yourself Rules, those things are copyrighted, so they come on like a thumb drive. I know our Shack actually, one of our counselors ran it and then ran it through Google Meet so that the Shack Committee could actually watch that. And then Vector Solutions is actually what we use as employees too. It's our compliance courses that all employees go through. Bus drivers, myself, teachers and staff. And you probably saw the feedback. That was some really strong feedback on the Vector Solutions and felt like that our kids really needed that. I will say that the Play It Safe and Protect Yourself rules, those types of things. You know, it, it's, it's always a good thing when a kid is made aware, because kids are, they're young, they're naive, they're innocent, and they don't know. And many times the abuser is someone that is a family member or a trusted member is what research shows. And so really going through all of those different conversations, but making sure that handling it at the appropriate age for those children. The K one program is cartoon based. So it's, you know, a little dog and little kids that are playing in the park or at the swimming pool and they handle it in a very kid-friendly way. The second grade material is actually a child who is a child actor who's doing this whole bit. But also getting across a very important message that our, our kids need to hear. But parents are in full control of this. They have parent choice on this. Whether they want this, they don't, they want to review it and then say they don't. We're not gonna pull their kids in if they're not wanting that for them.
Just so I'm clear, the committee has done their work. They've done their due diligence and they've made the recommendation. Okay.
Well, and again, thank you to that committee, because this is a lot of heavy work and then trying to really analyze everything, all of the things that have come to them and then make a decision that's gonna be best for all students, not just one student. And they gave some really good sound feedback, I felt like, on what they were responding to and I, I think they did an excellent job, so I'd, I'd like to say thank you to that group.
Thank you for that explanation.
And it's also great that it's opt-in. That's, that's big. Like, I, I mean, that's very, very important here that parents are in control of this.
Parent rights and parent choice.
Question on that, Dr. Ferguson, are we gonna send out something in advance that? And then so are we gonna host like in a night where they can come and watch them or is it gonna be just on an individual?
Schedule. So the, the Play It Safe, for example, the counselor or the classroom teacher would send that out. However, that communication comes out. And there would be plenty of time for those families then to come in and view that material if they wanted to. And obviously, if they wanted to view it at home and they couldn't come, then the counselor, just like she did with the Shack Committee, could play it through a Google Meet and let it play.
And this is something that would happen at the campus level?
Yes. And then there is, there's material too that the teacher instructor reads because you don't really want to go off script on something like this, right? And we don't want our teachers also placed in a position to start talking about things that they're not really trained in. And counselors obviously have a high level of training. Our teachers do get training, but it's more for their own knowledge and being watchful. But for them to be the key instructor on that, the counselors will handle that.
And I was gonna say thank you too, without having watched them ourselves, to, to see that detailed feedback that really appreciate all the time and effort that the Shack Committee put in, for them to recommend a different company for each grade level. The time and the comments they made of why they were recommending each and the appropriateness of each, it was a big help.
I, I love that our parents will get to say yes or no to this, right? Full, full control on having that always, just to encourage parents, even if you're not doing it, make sure you have a conversation.
And the Shack Committee is made up of parents. I mean, I
Staff members.
Twenty-five, thirty people, something like that, if I recall. Okay.
Yeah, we approved that. Was that last month? One month before? Okay, trustees, I think this is probably the easiest way for us to approach this. This is the cleanest way for us to do this. So in your packet, you have the detailed information from the Student Health Advisory Council Board, or the Student Health Advisory Council recommendation. We've heard the request by Trustee Linker. We've heard the explanation by Superintendent Ferguson. So here's the thing, I think, since it's on the agenda, here's, here's, here's how we should approach this. I'm going to ask for a motion. If there is no motion, then we will default to what Trustee Linker is requesting. If there is a motion and a second, then we will bring it to a vote tonight.
May I ask one clarifying question? If we do postpone this a month, how does that affect us? Are we purchasing software? Does it put us behind in any kind of timeline to push?
It just becomes more challenging because when you look at a counselor trying to get class time from teachers to go in and do their guidance lessons, and you've got six grade levels in multiple classrooms, eight to nine sections per grade level potentially. It, it will create some scheduling demands and then making sure that the high school, middle school, high school age kids get that completed. There's also demands on that because you're looking at a, a schedule of trying to take time to get this done, right, and completed. So it will put a delay on us getting things accomplished in a timely manner. And right, time is of the essence because you never know when it might be happening and it might help a child.
And so again, for me as chair of the meeting and because it is on the agenda, I will call for a motion. And again, if there is no motion, then we will go along with what Trustee Linker is requesting. If there is a motion and a second, then we will bring it to a vote tonight and see if it passes. Any other conversation about this before I ask for a motion? Okay, so with that, then I will ask for a motion. Again, we're under consent and this is on agenda item ten E. I'll ask for a motion. Going once, going twice. Okay, I don't hear a motion, so we're going to table this agenda item then to next month's meeting per the request of Trustee Linker. Okay, agenda item eleven, public comment on non-agenda items. There are no non, um, non-agenda item speakers for tonight. With that, we are now at agenda item twelve, closed session. And so the board will now go into closed session under Texas Government Code, chapter five five one dot oh seven one, dot oh seven two, dot oh seven four, dot oh seven six. Once we're done in closed session, if there are any items that we need to take action on, those will have to be done in public. And so we will come out to take action on those items in public. You're more than welcome to stick around for that. Otherwise, thank you so much for coming to spend your evening with us. Have a very great evening and a happy Thanksgiving.
We are now at agenda item thirteen A, consideration and possible action regarding hiring contract personnel. I'll call for a motion.
I believe that the board approved the hiring of all contract personnel as presented by administration.
Thank you trustee Dixon. Is there a second? Thank you trustee Beavers. All in favor? That is all seven of us. I believe that takes us through the entire agenda for the evening. Want to say thank you to each one of you. It's been a really long evening. Thank you for your commitment to it all. If there are no objections, this meeting is adjourned. Have a great evening.